I guess we're opening the uh Crook County Wolf Committee Monday, November third at three oh five P M. And he's got a little change to the agenda. We're gonna start with the O D F W presentation before we approve the minutes from July twenty fourth.
So yeah, that sounds fantastic. Um, did Ryan say that he can hear me?
He did not get to that yet. Yep, yes, he did. Okay, he can hear us. Aaron is muted, but he can talk through this right here.
Yeah, just let me know if you cannot hear me, Ryan. Ryan, you can even just call me on the phone. We talk all the time. And it's just Ryan who's on right now. He can hear me? All right, well, fantastic.
I guess, Aaron, are you able to, or Ryan, are you able to hear Aaron? Oh, yep, he can do it. Yeah, we're keeping the mics locked, just a new setting that we're doing um to prevent some disturbance. So, Aaron, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone for uh inviting myself to come and participate in this meeting. By way of introduction, my name is Aaron Bott. Aaron, like the brother Moses, A A R O N, Bott, B O T T. And I am the Regional Wolf Biologist for Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, some of our other staff members are in attendance today. And I've been asked to just give an update on wolf activity in Crook County. Um, specifically what's been going on in twenty twenty five, so. Uh, my job and my responsibility as a biologist is to monitor the wolf population and I. Coincidentally, live here in Primeville, but I cover all of central Oregon and northwestern Oregon. So there's three wolf biologists that cover the state. And uh the state's divided between all of us and I cover all of central Oregon. Um, and again, conveniently, I live here in Crook County in Primeville, so uh not, not a big ask for me to come out here. Again, wolves are one of the species that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife manages, just like our deer and our elk. And everything else on the landscape. Um, this comes through the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution. The states are responsible for managing and conserving wolves and other species as a public resource. Uh, a little bit of background biology about wolves. I often begin my presentations talking about wolves because. I've found it to be a fatal mistake as a wolf biologist to assume that my audience has an in-depth knowledge of wolves, whether they like them or dislike them. Um, there's definitely a lot of uh cultural baggage that animals like wolves carry. And so I'll, I'll quickly just do a recap about their biology and then I'm gonna talk again more specifically about. Uh, wolf activity in recent months here in Crook County. Um, wolves are known to scientists as Canis lupus. Uh, they have many common names or nicknames. Gray wolves is the most common name that we use here in the state of Oregon, but people also refer to them as timber wolves. Um, not all gray wolves are gray, just like no black bears are black. It's kind of one of those. Common names that is loosely applied to a species. On average, wolves are about a hundred pounds. The males are larger than the females. Uh, males typically in winter time are around under ten pounds and females are around ninety pounds. Uh, they lose weight in the summertime. That's when they're their leanest. Uh, but right around a hundred pounds is the average wolf size. Surprisingly, wolves don't live as long as most people think. Usually they live two to five years before they die. However, they can live up to twelve years in the wild, just like a large dog, which is essentially what they are. Um, gray wolves are the ancestor to all of our domestic dogs that we have today in our houses, including your. Shih-tzus and Chihuahua, believe it or not, um, just different dog breeds, but all stemming from their ancestor, this Canis lupus animal. Um, wolves don't live a very long time just because life is tough. Uh, if they're not getting smacked by cars or getting shot, uh wolves are. Very territorial and when they go into other territories with wolf packs, uh they risk being attacked. And potentially even kill. Hey, John? John's heard me talk so many times, he'd probably do this for me. Wolves also are predators of prey that are much larger than themselves. In Oregon, most of their diet, over seventy percent of their diet is comprised of elk. Elk are many times larger than a wolf and it can be very risky for wolves to go after their prey. And oftentimes we handle wolves um and see that they've. Uh, sustained some pretty traumatic injuries throughout their lives while hunting prey that are larger than themselves. Uh, even mule deer are typically larger than wolves. And uh on occasions, we have even documented deer killing wolves. So it's, it's just a tough life. Uh, which is why they don't generally live that long. Wolves reproduce just once a year and that's in April. If you're familiar with the life cycle of a coyote, wolves and coyotes have a very similar reproductive timeline. So they breed in the middle of February and a few months later, they whelp with a litter of pups. Um, usually it's about six pups per litter, but by the end of the calendar year, only two or three are typically still alive. That's just how it is for any wildlife. Uh, it's tough being a baby animal out in nature. And so whether you're a fawn or an elk cap or a wolf pup, uh mortality rates are usually around fifty percent for that first year. Um, the wolf pack is a group of wolves that reproduce. Not just a, a group of wolves, but it's a reproducing family unit. So a pack is made of a breeding male and a breeding female. Sometimes people refer to these as alphas. Um. We as, as biologists don't call them alphas, but I won't go down that rabbit hole. Uh, it's just a, a male and a female that mate together. Um. They are monogamous, they stick together for life. And they raise their litter of pups together until the pups reach just about sexual maturity. Um, which is just before they turn, turn two years old. So typically wolf pups will stay with their parents until they're around eighteen months-ish. Um, just before their first uh window of reproductive opportunity pops up in February. At which time those pups disperse. Wolves, like most animals, avoid inbreeding, so they leave their home pack, their birth pack. And they travel on the landscape as lone wolves seeking a mate and a territory where they can set up shop. So that's a bit about the biology of these animals. Um, this is just a, a graph showing you the growth rate of a wolf uh for the first seven years of its life. Shows again, your males are hovering around. Uh, their heaviest between three to four years of age, just over a hundred pounds. This data is specific to Oregon. Um, we've handled over four hundred and forty wolves in the state. Um, and this is just kind of shows the trajectory of their lives and their weights as they age. So that's for gee whiz sake, I guess. And as I already discussed, as wolves reach sexual maturity, typically around the two-year mark is when they kick rocks and they. Leave mom and dad and they go off to find a mate. And in Oregon, wolves have been naturally re-colonizing the state. Since the reintroduction of wolves into Idaho in the mid nineteen nineties, um wolves have been advancing westward. And so as uh we move further east, wolf density increases. As we move further west, wolf density decreases. There are fewer wolves the further west you go. Right now in twenty twenty five, and the further east you go, you have more wolves just because of their dispersal patterns. Um, however, we have been having wolves uh in Crook County and in central Oregon for many years now. Wolves are, are not new to central Oregon. They're not new to Crook County. Uh, but right now, this week, uh we have a dispersing radio collared wolf known as O R one eight three. This is a female wolf that is originally from Umatilla County. She was trapped and radio collared this past May. She is currently eighteen months old. And when she was captured, she weighed about seventy-six pounds. She looks a bit better than that right now. That's her spring coat after she shed. Um, her winter coat's coming in, but she's probably still hovering around eighty pounds. Um, right now, she has been making their rounds in Crook County. Uh, this is a very impressive map based off of her collar data for just over the past week. I've put some timestamps on there just to give you an idea of how far and how quickly wolves can move in a very short period of time. Wolves are impressive walkers. Uh, in my career as a wildlife biologist, I've worked in multiple western states and I've worked with all large mammals found in the lower forty-eight states. From beavers to moose to grizzly bears, and I have never seen a creature move as much and as quickly as a wolf can move. Um, here you go again, this animal's from Umatilla. And uh she came down through Grant County. You can see that date over by Trout Creek at ten twenty-three. She popped up uh just north of Suppley on ten twenty-seven, dropped down on the thirtieth, the Sun Text. Thirty-first over at Brothers. Yesterday, she was up by post and today she is back over by Suppley again. So she crossed it over uh Blaina and just made a big round in just a matter of days. Uh, incredibly impressive movements. Our radio callers don't give us a live feed on wolf movements. It gives us an upload. Um, once a day, our computers will upload and it backlogs every few hours of where a wolf has been. That's all those circles that you can see along that, that line. This is literally the map that I, I check when I'm looking to see where my colored wolves are at and where they've been. Um, for the last uh week, however long O R one eighty-three has been in the county. We've been calling and notifying producers and landowners when she is present. Um, also sharing that information publicly. If anyone wants to call and has more specific questions, they're always welcome to call us. And get more details as to her movements. Um, she attacked a September calf on, uh it was right around the twenty-seventh date up near Suppley. In Crook County, so that was a confirmed depredation which happened a week ago Saturday. So just over a week now, nine days-ish. Um. Uh, since that time, she has not depredated in Crook County and we're continually uh giving updates against the public. Um, we don't have everyone's phone number. We're not like law enforcement, a government agency that has everyone's emails and phone numbers. Uh, but we encourage folks to, again, reach out if they have questions. And we're encouraging the people we are talking to to talk to their neighbors and to, to share that information. So hopefully that word is getting out. Aaron?
Yes.
Who said she hadn't depredated in Crook County? Has she depredated again? So she depredated in Crook County that ten twenty-seven was a depredation. And she was affiliated with a couple of depredations in Umatilla County with her pack. So that would have been in August, I believe. Um, and then she dispersed. Yeah, I mean, just over a week ago, about two weeks ago is when she dispersed and went to pack. So her pack, the Pearson Creek pack. Um, is in the federally de-listed zone. So they're managed just by the state. There's no federal oversight. And because of the depredations and in the short period of time that those depredations occurred, we did. Lethally remove two of her litter mates. So we, we set traps and we caught and removed two of the pack members and that would have been back in August as well.
But she's shown that she carried that negative brain portion.
Yeah, and I mean, I, as a biologist, I think it's also just important to acknowledge that wolves, as they move on the landscape, they're gonna eat. Anything that is accessible. Um, wolves don't generate some kind of preference for beef versus venison. But yeah, she depredated with her pack of Umatilla County and she's depredated now in Crook County a week ago. So we're definitely keeping tabs on her and that's also one of the reasons why. We're trying to be as helpful as possible to the community and providing any information possible. So seven days a week is what we've been doing currently on the weekends as well as the weekdays. Uh, first thing in the morning, we check her upload and we share that information with the public, so. Um, but one important reminder here is that there are other wolves in Crook County, as anyone will tell you, and not every wolf has a radio collar. So these callers provide us great information, but don't let it be a false sense of security and think. If she's not around, that doesn't mean there are no wolves around.
How many are collared?
In Crook County.
In Crook County.
So Crook County, she is the only wolf that has a working GPS collar. We have two other wolves whose callers have failed. The GPS callers typically only last about eighteen months. It's just one of the disadvantages of uh getting GPS uploads. It's pretty frustrating. Um, I'm the biologist who traps and radio collars the wolves. That's a lot of work to do that.
I bet.
And, you know, we get eighteen months of solid data out of it, but the battery lifespan. I'm no engineer, but my understanding is that there's just not a better product out there in the market. It's the same kind of callers that we're using for all of our other wildlife basically as well. Um, so we do have other wolves that have been radio collared in Crook County. But at this moment today, on November third, two thousand twenty-five, she's the only wolf in Crook County that has an active radio collar. Uh, this is kind of a good segue though to just, again, reiterate, this is our map that we post to the public. And this gets revised and updated usually once or twice a year. Um, this is an informational map that is readily available on our website. Uh, it maps areas of known wolf activity and this is specific to Crook County. Um, again, this uh map that I particularly stuck up here is just a little bit dated. Uh, those reference wolves that you can see on there, O R one thirty-one, one thirty-two, open-based collars. Uh, are no longer functioning, although the wolves are still on the landscape. One fifty-eight is no longer in Crook County. In fact, is no longer alive. Uh, but these are places where we work with private landowners and uh. Ranchers as well as hunters, as well as other biologists in various agencies to monitor and study wolves on the landscape. We can have wolf activity outside of this shaded area that you see. I mean, by all means, a wolf can walk and has walked, um, you know, much closer to Primeville in the past. Uh, but this is where we generally see regular wolf activity based off of multiple radio callers. Um, and also based off of uh uh activity from documented by producers and landowners as well as biologists. So we generate this map, again, not to. Uh, generate um a false sense of security, but also just to give an idea to people who are curious. This is wolf habitat, right? In Crook County, we have wolves and this is where we see most of our, our wolf activity here in the shaded area. So we do that, again, hopefully to be helpful. And then I believe this is my last slide, but I have printed this off. Um, let me hide this so that. Those online can see. And I've printed this off uh to pass out to you folks and this is available also to Ryan and anyone else, anyone else who's uh. Tuning in online. Uh, you can take a screenshot of this or write down these numbers, but this is basically a contact list for this region. Um, if anyone has concerns, questions, just gee whiz, I wanna talk about wolves. Um, these are the numbers that you can reach out to. Um, as well as the various responsibilities and titles of those people affiliated with those numbers. Again, behind me in the room today, we have staff members from our local Primeville O D F W biologist. So Jamie behind me is the district biologist. Um, she's back there probably waiting. Zach Slick and Michaela are also two biologists out of the Primeville office. Um, they cover the Ojico district, so it's more than just Crook County, but again, coincidentally and conveniently. Their office is, is here in Primeville. Um, also here today in the room and on this sheet is David Andrews, who is one of our federal partners. He's with USDA Wildlife Services. And uh stealing his thunder here, I don't know if he's on the agenda, but David is the Wildlife Service Agent specifically tasked with helping producers with wolf. Issues. Um. Compared to other Wildlife Service Agents that have various tasks, David is dedicated to central Oregon. To Shute's County, Crook County and Jefferson County, um, to help mitigate conflicts. So he's available to help out with everything from putting out tools, helping with range riding, to removing. Uh, livestock carcasses from the landscape, things that would have potentially attract wolves that are in the area. So David is a fantastic resource. Um, and of course, I'm listed there as well and Hunter. Um, we have a great working relationship in Crook County with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, it's a fantastic relationship. When there is uh an animal that is dead or injured and. Uh, private landowner or rancher wants to have an official investigation done. In order to potentially receive compensation, then they reach out to O D F W. And we are the agency tasked as experts to go out and look at these injured or killed animals to determine if wolves were involved. Um, if for whatever reason a producer can't get ahold of us. Um, they're welcome to call the Sheriff's Office, the non-emergency dispatch number. And then the Sheriff's Department can get ahold of us. Again, usually this. Uh, even takes place on the weekends. We go out and we help do those investigations. But again, great working relationship with the Sheriff's Office here in town. And that is my update right now. Um, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them and. Be helpful in any way that I can.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Callers aside, how many wolves do you think we have in Crook County?
So the number fluctuates, right? This is a loaded question because you could ask me, how many elk do we have in Crook County? We had more yesterday and over the weekend than we do today because we just finished the hunt, right? So wolves are animals and they're moving. You saw how far our radio collar wolf is moving. So they're fluctuating constantly. They're coming in the county, they're leaving the county, they're being born, they're dying. We know of three resident wolves that are up in the Ojicos and one that occasionally pops down from Jefferson County over by Mill Creek. Um, the Brothers area occasionally gets wolves coming up from the south that tiptoe into the county lines. And then over there on the Grant County border, we have several wolves and wolf packs that have historically been in that area. So if I were to take a snapshot right now, again, November third, twenty twenty-five. In Crook County, we probably have at least a half a dozen plus wolves. But that could change tomorrow when another wolf pack moves into this area and it's different than it was yesterday, right? So wolf density on the landscape in Crook County is constantly changing. We know for a fact that Crook County could have more wolves and probably will have more wolves. And we're just monitoring the population and it changes. It's different today than it was five years ago and it will be different five years than it is today.
I see.
When, when you go back to the caller and one that's been a problem. Is there any threshold of like, when do we get to start having a conversation about? Or, or packing up and sending her to all right, like we did with those ones?
So we do not translocate wolves within the state of Oregon, so there's no threat of us moving a problem wolf somewhere else. It's if you start striking out really bad, then we start talking about lethal removal. Um, where we are federally listed, we have to acknowledge that. Um, the state does not have ultimately the say as to when a wolf is removed in this area or not. Um, it's, it's not O D F W's call.
Yeah.
Um, we do keep specific records to determine based off of our management plan. Which was put together by the state, multiple stakeholders, ranchers, hunters, um, conservationists, et cetera. We have determined that a wolf is chronically depredating if they have two or more confirmed depredations. In a nine-month period that's attributed to that wolf or that group of wolves, right? So she right now is within that threshold. She's been involved in more than two depredations in that nine-month window. So that is again, um. The state management plan and just to reemphasize in case anyone turns in later.
Yeah.
It's federally listed right now.
So is that something you would talk to the federal government about taking care of? Uh, what I'm trying to figure out is, is there any opportunity? She's already in the critical level or she has another kill. Is there any, I mean, I know they were able to do something down in Lakeview.
Yeah.
To, to do, and it sounds like that was more because it was getting close to town.
Yeah, that was more of a human safety.
Human, human safety.
Yeah, so that wolf was um habituated to being close to town. And so the federal government decided that it was time to remove that wolf. That was a conversation I was not involved in. It is, again, different agency and above me. We do communicate with the feds on this regularly, so they are aware of when we have. Problem animals. And I also should step back and say that. Um, in order for that threshold of chronically depredation to be acknowledged. We also have to look to see how the operations were managing their livestock at the time of the depredation. If they were being responsible, which most producers are, if they're just keeping a clean operation, great. Uh, ensuring that they're not baiting predators or doing something nefarious like that too. So again, um, when we do an investigation and we determine that it was, it was confirmed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then yeah, that's a strike against her and we tally that up on our paperwork and we reiterate that to the, the feds.
Sure, you currently have a conversation with them saying this is a problem wolf we need to.
No, because their offices are all closed.
Got it. So when, when they do open, then you would call?
Yes, absolutely.
It's bad timing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have questions?
So one question I would have is, okay, so a wolf shows up at my place and it's attacking my dog and I kill it. Is that acceptable?
According to the federal rules, it is not. According to the state rules, it is. So while they are federally protected, it's not acceptable, but when they are de-listed, that would be acceptable.
What would be, what would, what would the? Would it be fined? Do you go to jail? What's the?
Yeah, it's a felony. It's, it's a pretty big deal. Yeah, the only acceptable time you can kill a wolf is. Um, in defense of human life.
So if it's eating your dog, get between it and a dog.
Yeah, with a dark knife?
Yeah, of course. There was a time you would have linkeded that.
And also just to like, when speaking about dogs, it's livestock protection dogs and not just pet dogs. It's under the state. Like, so if you had, if you had a dog and it's like your healer or, you know, it's just another dog that you're not using for livestock protection. Those pet domestic dogs are excluded from that.
And they're excluded from the compensation. Um, are you talking about?
Yeah, it was, yeah, so then it still would just fall under like, you'd be claiming like my life. Yeah, but the domestic dogs that aren't working like as protection dogs are not covered under our, even our estate.
Yeah, we'll go over uh seven, 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 this new state bill, which is over that. Anyone, any other questions?
Okay, Aaron, I appreciate it. Yeah. Yeah, no problem. If you guys, uh. I'll just say this one last comment. I, because my jurisdiction covers a huge area. Um, I'll remind everyone that O D F W's not in charge of the compensation program. It's the Oregon Department of Agriculture generates the funding. Our only involvement aside from monitoring the population is we are tasked by the state to do the investigations. Uh, we're the only agency that can do that, except here in Crook County and a couple other state or counties here in the. I don't wanna get into the details, but in the eastern part of the state Wildlife Services like David Andrews can also help us do those investigations. Um, and I sit in on a lot of county meetings, so I'm no expert, but I, I go to a lot of compensation committee meetings. So hopefully I can answer any questions if you do have any that pop up.
And to go with that, with O D A, it's Sunny Summers, who's a good person to contact with for any wolf-related activities.
Yeah.
Questions about that?
Well, thank you for that.
Do you have that on dream list?
I do, yes.
Elena, Elena would like to be unmuted.
Yes, see what I can do.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thanks. Um, I was trying to take a minute, so Hunter, I don't know if you still need me to do that?
Yeah, I appreciate it because.
Just a quick question, um, I didn't write it down fast enough. Is it wolf O R one eighty-three or what is this wolf's number?
O R one eighty-three.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, we switched the um, O D F W update with the um, we're approving the previous minutes from July. Previous minutes from July twenty-fourth. And so Elena, if you could go over all that, whenever you get the chance, really appreciate that.
You bet. I have them both pulled up. Um. And I'm happy to read it. If you guys can all hear me, I'll just read away.
Yeah.
These are from, yeah, July twenty-fourth, two thousand and five. We were in the extension office and. In attendance, Libby attended via Zoom. It was Hunter, David and myself. We had Tim Deboot, Scott and um, initially multiple Zoom guests. However, after the meeting was called to order, there was a virtual hacker that hijacked the meeting and so we had to end the meeting. And restart, so we reconvened at three twenty-five. Uh, we had our committee update where Ellie Gage, our past chair, her term had expired, so we were appreciative that Hunter stepped in. Was willing to continue upon approval. Dave moved and I seconded that Hunter continues as a chair. So that passed unanimously. The new business, um, Tim Deboot talked about the Senate Bill seven, seven, seven. With um. Bringing changes, increases in compensation for livestock loss due to wolf depredation. And he also shared that the Department of Agriculture was planning to be in August for that, um. Was it August twenty twenty-five? Didn't it just happen?
Yes.
I think the meeting, the minutes are incorrect then, August twenty twenty-five, um, to discuss the implementation of the Senate bill. So he was just sharing information. Committee update, uh, we had three applicants for three vacancies and we reviewed those applications, discussed them. And then each applicant, thank you guys for applying, um, was approved and passed unanimously. We have John Daler, who is serving as the livestock owner manager. Seth Crawford, County Commissioner Representative, Anne Lynn Steele, Conservation and Coexist. We went into, excuse me, old business. Talked about the depredation funds. Uh, there were two depredations in Cook County, one confirmed and one probable for McCormick's. We have twenty, uh, two thousand eight hundred and forty that we could allocate. Hunter moved to give the full amount to the McCormick's. Dave seconded and it passed unanimously. Then our grant funds, we had fifty thousand for non-lethal use and. We need to review uh, the prior applications from Desert Creek Ranch, the McCormick's in Hatfield. So we kind of talked a little bit about how much each ranch asked for and if they received funds from Deschutes County's wolf. Um, depredation committee because some of them I think applied for both. So Scott was going to help us out to get minutes from those. Min- meetings, so we could review and then award funds. And we adjourned the meeting at three forty-seven.
All right, thank you. We need a.
Need to probably motion.
Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do. Okay.
Nice.
You've got my name wrong.
Oh, you got your name wrong on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is spelled wrong or?
So, my name is Stell.
So.
S T E L L E. Yeah, and not steel, but still.
I will get that corrected.
That's on me. I apologize.
It's.
That may have been on me.
Happens all the time.
Yeah, gotcha. So S T E L L E.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get that corrected. Um.
Did I hear you were seconding that with the correction though, Linda? Well, you were, yeah, never mind.
I'll change my motion to. Be with the corrections.
With the corrections, yeah. Would you like to resecond it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we good, Elena?
I, yeah.
All, all in favor or all?
All or would be all in favor?
Yeah, yeah. Hi.
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 All opposed? No. And now we'll move the next part of the meeting, which is some committee updates. Just want to correct, congratulate the, the new member, is Linda, Linda.
Stell.
Stell, thank you. And John, I believe you've been on this committee before.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming back and stuff. Thank you for doing another term. Okay, no, I just want to bring up that uh, next year on June first, we'll have. Two uh, possible vacancies. Uh, Libby's term comes to an end and Elena, your term comes to an end. Uh, I just wanted to put that out there so you guys know ahead of advance. And I want to talk a little bit about the, that meeting we had with um, ODA back in August about Senate Bill seven, seven, seven. Do you know? So my understanding. Some changes. So we're talking about compensation going forward. I think we talked about setting prices for different categories of weight. Um. That's good. I was kind of wanting to think about maybe we go and see during the time of the depredation, we pick the local, like, central livestock auction. And using the average price for that weight group within the last three cents. I think you're going to be a little bit more closer to the price. They're fluctuating so, so much right now. I just don't like to be stuck on a number early and it causes issues down the line. And I didn't know if anybody's opinion on that.
I think that's all right. Um. There's, we're still pressuring the state to set. A standard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, had a conversation with the ODA two weeks ago.
Okay.
Again about that and uh, they're really resistful, but. Like I pointed out at that, at that conversation, well, what if Alala County thinks their calves are worth ten thousand dollars? Then you put the multiplier on it and they eat the fund before anybody else gets it. And standardizing the price across the board, you would give all the producers that have been depredated with the same playing field. I don't know if it finally ran true, but we tried one more time.
Okay.
But I do like your idea as far as what we're doing here. I think that'd be prudent until something better comes along.
Yeah, yeah, just because my concern now is just with prices changing so often and not knowing where the cow market's going to be. I don't want somebody to. Be shorted or get overcompensated due to where we're going to be. And um. And while I go about that, I just want to talk about it, the Bill SB seven, seven, which is basically now. Um, they're putting a multiplier, which is I believe cattle's up to three times. Right? Now, yeah. Three X on uh, which capped at twenty-five thousand dollars per hen. Um, this is going to be for cows. Um, I don't know if heifers are on that multiplier or on the same batch.
I did some looking into it and I don't think it's definitive yet. There's discussion, but I do believe right now they're lumped into adults. Okay, the adult category is what I have there is.
Okay. Um. Which, yeah, I, I think heifers should be considered up there with adults, even though they do have some more calving complications. That's just my one concern.
Well, it, it would depend on an age bracket there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because some people would call it. Two-year-old uh, heifer.
Yeah.
You know, so a heifer can be a wiener cat, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Break in there.
Okay. I agree with you on that. Yeah, because when you go to a second year heifer, they have a lot better. Lot better, or three years, the best chance. Um, when you get to that eighteen months, or no eighteen months, two years, you do get some complications. Um.
So Hunter, I don't, um, being you.
Yeah.
The question I have is I don't understand.
Okay.
How much money we have. So I see what it says here, but is, are there other fund?
So all of our funds currently we get granted through ODA, Oregon Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
Um, we requested this last year, funds of fifty thousand. Um, depending just based off the amount of conflicts we've had last year. Um. Not knowing where we're going to be in the next month or two, it's going to probably be pretty similar as what it was. Um, but so we're kind of off on the years, so I believe we're kind of backdating one year on everything. And so the funds were, we request is for the previous year. I think, but depredations is for the year of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's two different funds that we apply for.
Hey Hunter?
Yes.
Are you compensating for the new Senate rule where fifty percent of your, all your funds have to go to?
Just get an action. On the, on lethal, yeah. So. At least fifty percent of the grant funds must go to financial systems for preventative, non-lethal measures. Um, this livestock management techniques. So that's going to go for flattery, foxlights, game cameras, range riding. Um, anything you can do to help deter that. Wolf from being around your cattle. So that's something we're going to have to take into account from before as well. Um, let's see. And I believe, yep, so live, or for dogs is also on there. It's only for working dogs now for. The. Get compensated. You've got to be a working cattle dog. Unfortunately, if it's just your home dog or everyday dog. It does not get compensated, but it's backed. Um, but that's why they're also wanting to do these multipliers to help. Certain issues a lot. Uh, so where's I get with this? This was talking more about what we want to do for compensation in the future. I like the idea of dealing the local market and I can go through the three weeks of during that time of depredation. Um, that sounds like you guys do too, but. We could, we could do a fixed rate like we did last year, but then I would think we should do a new updated version since prices have come up quite a bit.
Uh, no, I agree with you. I think if you do a fixed rate, there's too much. Margin of error there.
Hmm.
And why not just look at the market as it is and when it was.
Hmm.
Cool.
And then we don't have to update each year. We just go off of it.
Yeah.
And we, you guys give it three weeks, four, or four sales, four weeks. That's you, what the group wants to do.
Three weeks is going to be a month's worth of sales. I mean, that, if you picked a month that it's in and take all the sales out of that month, that's as good average as you're going to get.
Yeah. Do we like to go regional or just stick with local? They're all fairly similar.
Might as well stick with local.
I'm thinking local.
And if you go, you know, you take three weeks. The week that the demonstration happened, one before that, one after.
Yeah.
And you got an average.
And if there's a missing sale, we just push it to the week after that.
Hmm.
Yeah. Aaron and Elena, do you like that as well? Oh, she's on mute.
You gotta open her up every time.
Yeah.
Hi, I like that. I'm just trying to get it all down in the minutes.
Totally.
I would turn my video on if you wanted, but I don't have to. I'm really here.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Okay.
Your voice is perfect. So yeah.
So question.
Yes, sir.
With the three multiplier and the average of what prices are going for, that's going to allow us to compensate for three.
Of two, three.
But I mean.
Hmm.
If you go max out, that allows us to compensate for three depredations in Cook County, is that enough? Or should we be asking for more money?
We're probably, I'm curious to see where we're going to be here in the next. Two months. Uh, till the year's end. Uh, it seems like in the past, we've been averaging between one and two depredations. Um, so at this time, I don't see. Too much of a concern yet.
As long as that's, that's what our average is and we don't end up not being able to compensate or not being able to. Apply the effective multiplier for those. Compensations. I, I ask for enough money upfront and we don't get short.
Yeah.
I may be wrong here, but isn't it two different pools of money when you ask for the money for this? So you would, it, it doesn't matter how much we ask for non-lethal. There's a, there's a different application when it comes to the depredation.
Okay.
But I guess my question would be. Do we need to spend a certain amount of money on non-lethal in order, in order to be able to get to a certain amount so we're not? Not requesting enough, so then that's, you know, so if we request fifty, can we only pay fifty?
And that is the question.
Or is it? The statewide has to be fifty fifty, or does it have to be on the local level fifty fifty?
Currently the state's doing it, but I don't think it's going to do it forever. She, they're bouncing that at, at the state level right now. But I think they're looking to transfer it to our level.
Yeah. And then they only get their pool refilled every two years.
Yeah, it's a biannual.
Biannual.
Do we have a sense on the non-lethal, how successful it's really been? I mean, I had a, I talked to a rancher in Union County a, a week ago and he's uh, he himself put up three cameras.
Okay.
All of which were stolen.
Okay.
By people jumping fences, going into hut or to shed hut.
Absolutely.
And three in a, um, probably a year's period of time.
Hmm.
So the money we're putting in for non-lethal, are we seeing results from them?
So the, I'm. Could be wrong, but a big part of these non-lethal funds, because most of our depredations start happening when we're calving. In winter time, they tend to be closer to home.
Hmm.
And so. Kind of the hope in that is that our non-lethal funds aren't getting stolen and lost. We're hoping that it's going to be mostly in the winter time. From. What's showing fast.
Can I turn?
Yeah.
Yes, we see a lot of successful results and it's important to realize. I, I'm going to use the word proactive rather than non-lethal funding. Proactive funding can be used to not just buy tools like flattery and foxlights, but it can reimburse. Producers who are having to work more hours because they know the wolves are on the landscape. And so, yeah, I mean, it does pay off. Because in theory, those funds should be not just buying tools, but also helping people who. Are having to work more regularly, so. That's, that's good. I mean, that's, that's how it should be, I believe.
What's the weight of a coo, of a coyote?
Thirty pounds.
That's all.
They look bigger because they're fluffy. And most people tell me that wolves are two hundred pounds, but. They're not two hundred pounds, they're about a good pound. They just get fluffy in the winter.
Yeah. So I guess with this, if everybody agrees, we could make a motion to. Do the uh, set the prices based off the fair market value. Of the time of the depredation within most recent three sales. At the, at the local livestock auction.
Move.
Second.
Anybody pose? Nobody up there?
Nobody. She's good.
Okay. And let's see where we're at.
Sorry, can you just tell me who seconded that?
Was it you, son?
Uh, I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Don did it.
His fault.
Actually, that was part of new business. Now we're going to the second part of it. Uh, now we need, so we have. Fifty thousand dollars that we were awarded this last year. Um, usually we like to try to do these awards in April. Um, this year we just kind of got pushed behind. Um, but we've had three applicants, McCormick's, Hatfield Hides, and Desert Creek, Land Cattle and Timber. Uh, these are the same three applicants that. Um, applied for funding with Deschutes County. They're large acreage properties that split a lot of these boundaries. And so I went back and looked at what Deschutes County did for compensation. Um. They did this back a couple more, about a couple months ago. Right here. They did. They gave the McCormick Ranch thirty thousand. They had the same funding we did, fifty thousand. They gave Hatfields ten thousand and Desert Creek five thousand and they kept five thousand towards committee projects. Um, that I think they just. Uh, changed this last month. Um, I was, since we don't. Need any five thousand for our committee projects, because we're coming down to the end of the year. Um, I would like to, and I think it's fair, McCormick's have had issues. I think they deserve, they requested eighty thousand. Um. But I think about thirty-one thousand, thirty-five hundred. Or thirty-one, five hundred is going to be a. A good price to give them. They, they have a lot of conflicts. They need to. It's a big property. Aaron could talk a little bit more, I think, of the property up there. He's seen it quite a bit.
Yeah, and Ryan Kingsbury is on today as well, but last year in particular, we had uh, three groups of wolves. They had two single tens and then another group of wolves come up from the south, the deer heart wolves. They were right there in the Brothers area and um. That's difficult, it's difficult terrain because. Uh, we don't anticipate a lot of residential established packs in that area because of. It's flat and it's the desert and it's sagebrush. There's not a lot of prey to eat, native prey to eat. Um, but wolves tend to use that repeatedly as a migration corridor, or I should say a, a. Dispersal corridor as they move across the landscape. And so for years now, McCormick's have seen. Uh, irregular, regular wolf activity, if I can describe it that way. So nothing. Established for long periods of time, but it's definitely a place where wolves repeatedly go through and it. Causes me a bit of heartburn because there's, there's nothing but cows out there, so.
How much uh? Non-lethal is in play out there right now?
Um, Ryan can tell you. This is everything and I'll, I'll just jump in, Ryan, and if you want to expand on this, but we've not just worked with the McCormick operation, but all the neighboring operations or the large. Um, operations out there that have reached out to us. Um, David also can expand on this, but we've done a lot of night watch in the past, spending all night working. Um, trying to haze wolves off with spotlights, shotguns. We've done um, flattery out there on multiple occasions for multiple producers. Um, we've done uh, continuous carcass hauling. Um, just to reiterate, we remove carcasses from the landscape and haul them to the dump. Not just carcasses that were made by wolves, but we try to help producers keep their. Not just carcasses that were made by wolves, but we try to help producers keep their operation as clean as possible because wolves love to scavenge and those carcass pits act as a, as a magnet for those wolves. Um, so we haul off uh, things to the dumps for those folks. And uh, Ryan uh, has received some financial support from Deschutes County, as was mentioned. And he's been able to implement non-lethals on his own time as well down there, so he can speak more to that.
Yeah, you covered most of it.
Uh, biggest thing that we've done is the carcass removal and just extra human presence and like Aaron said, night watch and stuff like that, so I use some of the Deschutes County funds for some thermal. And that's helped to keep a watch, uh, especially this time of year during weaning, and then as we start calving and all that stuff and just try to keep a watch out.
And Ryan, you've been doing range riding and you guys have been putting flodry up and box lights, I know you guys were doing music at one point, or something about a playlist.
We between all of us in the primeville office, David Andrews and Ryan and several others down there in the brothers area, we we worked pretty hard last winter, that was when we had most of our issues with uh, OR one fifty eight a- among a couple other situations too, and um, I hope that you're okay with me saying this, Ryan, but there's also just a learning curve for folks that have not had to find ways to coexist with wolves on the landscape. And that learning curve takes a little bit of flexing and getting used to, and so we spent quite a lot of time last year. And uh, Ryan knows better than anyone in Crete County, I think, the drill now of, of how to operate with wolves on the landscape, so. It's just a little bit of patience and a little bit of elbow grease in order to get people familiar with how the process of coexisting with wolves works.
Ryan, John, uh, is there anything we can do to help you more in the non-lethal as a committee?
Hmm, I don't know, like Garen said, it's still kind of a learning curve and stuff, but the biggest thing that helps is just being out more, so obviously that's a challenge. Everybody needs to sleep at night and that's when they're most active, so. Uh, just kinda learning what works the best, uh, we did a lot of foxlights and stuff like that and I'm not gonna say they don't work, but they seem to get used to them fairly quickly, so if you're not constantly moving them, that's a challenge also, uh. Yeah, I don't know, it's still learning.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I probably should go back and tell you guys what everybody.
Yeah, don't go down your breakdown of how you think it should be.
Yeah, so let me talk about who applied for how much and then you can go from there. Uh, so Desert Creek applied for nine thousand six hundred dollars. Um, they're requesting funds for range riders, um, they have a large area. Their math came out to be eighty hours per month, twenty hour, or twenty dollars per hour for six months. Um, once again, they're also along Deschutes County, our county, so they applied for both. Uh, McCormick's, they total application request was eighty two thousand. Um, part of that was, let's see, an audio drone, um. There's some direct loss claims, and then you had a long list of a lot of deterrents that I don't have up here correctly. And then Becky Hatfield Hides, they asked for seventeen thousand eight hundred. And they also, all three applicants did it for Deschutes, so I was going off the shoots numbers and they've uh, allocated five thousand to Desert Creek Land Cattle and Timber, ten thousand to Hatfield Highland, and thirty thousand to McCormick Ranch. So I was just thinking, we, we follow similar lines to the shoots, I think they were very thorough in their investigation on this stuff. And I just added um, do, since they did forty five thousand and we're trying to almost fulfill that fifty thousand. I, I broke it down to add an extra like fifteen hundred each. But I would like to add, out of that fifty thousand, one thousand to go to O D F W. Um, this last year I went out and looked at game cameras for wolves, was out in the field with them, we did some, a blitz and everything. And there were multiple cameras that people up there took. Of cutting, cutting pine trees down and taking the whole box and everything in the box. We're not gonna be able to use them, they're all, right, password protected, but. What?
Can't reperish them, but.
I thought, um, I mean, you guys are doing a good job keeping updated with them, that'd be good for the committee to discuss about giving them a little bit of funds to replace one of these lost cameras.
Yeah, seems, seems, yeah. Good idea from you.
So how I broke it down was following the shoots, but giving a little extra would be six thousand for Desert Creek Land Cattle and Timber, eleven thousand five hundred for Hatfield Highland, and thirty one thousand five hundred for McCormick Ranch and one thousand, the O D F W. That's my mouth to that, frankly.
Ready for a motion on that?
Um, up for discussion.
I'm ready for a motion. Is that all the money?
That would be all the money we were allocated for this year. Um, I think it's best to use all the money allocated, especially it'd be kinda hard to get that money back and then request for more money in the following year. Something that we have to keep count of with these federal grant or, or even state grants. Um, so yeah, I would, maybe we'd like to make a motion, or I can make a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Anybody opposed? I guess all in favor first, all in favor. Anybody opposed? And so for the last thing on our topic is start letting all the uh, ranchers, everybody know that applications are now opening up, starting getting on this past week uh, for, for this year's funding. So I'm gonna keep, I make posts on Facebook, I run the Crete County Wolf Page and I'll keep making make it more aware, so get more applicants. I think the more applicants we get, the, the better.
Well, question. Explain the the preventative measure fund and the depredation fund. Where that money, that breakdown of that money?
Okay, so we uh, we go through sunny summers with Oregon Department of Agriculture. Um, and this kinda took me a while to figure out, so the funds we apply for, uh, for grant funds, it's a year behind. So we'll put the application in for April this year, which then goes back for last year. And then depredation funds go for the year of, so I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you will get money to compensate producers for twenty twenty five depredations this upcoming spring, right? But this upcoming spring, you will also get money to reimburse producers for proactive measures in twenty twenty six.
Correct.
So proactive is twenty twenty six and the reactive is twenty twenty five.
Okay, so I'm trying to, to get in my head the breakdown of i- is it just for those animals that were killed this, this year will be paid next year?
Yes, anything probable or confirmed?
What, what do we get for biennial?
For the state?
Yeah.
Ooh, she said it, um.
Was it two million?
I think it was two million.
Yeah, there's two million biennium.
And so out of that two billion, a hundred, or one million needs to be spent on proactive and one of them, one million is spent on depredation. And that's for over two-year period. Two-year period over the whole state.
Correct, yeah, and if I remember correctly, she wanted to break it in half, so she allocated one million for the first year, one million for the second year. So if there's leftover, if there was leftover money, it'd go back into the second year and there'd be extra funds to be distributed amongst all the counties equally.
Is this money taxable to the farmer? Do they get a ten ninety-nine if they receive forty thousand dollars?
I think this is tax free, I, I actually don't know that question, that's a good question.
Well, the only reason I say is if you get money to put a new pivot line on your farm, you get a ten ninety-nine.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good question.
I would assume so, it's just like selling a cat, but I don't know that.
Yeah.
Ryan, you, you don't have by a chance, do you?
I'm not currently aware.
Okay.
I would think they'd have to declare it's income.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's true for lethal, not lethal, any of it.
Yeah. If you were to sell it now, you'd have to pay taxes on that. That's income, yeah.
I will look into that one.
I just asked my best friend, Chat G P T. And it says, yes, in most cases, uh, wolf depredation compensation is considered taxable income under IRS rules and it goes on for quite a ways, but it does say there are some possible exceptions, but most likely it's taxable. That help?
That does, yeah, thank you.
However, their loss is greater than what they get, so it ends up washing, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably write that loss off on your taxes and.
Still, they got filed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you have a, a good heifer, a good young cow, and that you're expecting you could get five, six calves, seven calves out of it, and it's been depredated.
And then um, when we uh, award them money, do we have a process wherein they have to report back to us? Certain forms, things that have to happen, they come back?
With the um, the non-lethal?
Yeah.
Um, with the non-lethal, um, kind of we're going by good faith for a majority of it, but Aaron does say that he's out there and they're, they are implementing some of the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is uh, just observational, like I'm not a part, an official process that I can vouch, for example, that McCormick's have implemented those tools and yeah, so I guess by word of mouth, I can vouch for, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but. Let's read the site, site use.
Yeah.
So that is a good point, you know, there should be.
Site visits?
Button, or they could send photos in of what they do or, or something to document that.
Absolutely.
Use of those button.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fair request.
I can follow up with, with everybody and see where those funds, how they're working out for them. Okay. So yeah, I think um, yeah, applications are open and that should, this should be it. So. Is there gonna be a motion?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Everybody in favor?
Alright.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we're, uh, meeting's adjourned at four oh eight, thank you, Elena.
Is, is there a deadline of when those will come back in?
When?
The uh, application.
The applications? Yeah, so deadlines in March, that's just right, uh, March fifteenth, it's right, right out there.